Yes, sir.
While this meeting is ordered, please stand to the invitation given by Councilwoman Schmidt and silence your electronic devices.
Our honor, for why we're here, our will be that name, thy kingdom come, it will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us the same our day in red, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not to temptation, but to the right truth. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments? Each speaker will please use the podium. Please state your name and address before beginning your statement. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Please address your comments to the chair. The council will not engage in debate with the speaker. On the first vow, that means you have thirty seconds left. Second vow means your time is up.
John Roach.
John Roach, one sixteen grade U. Terrace. Last meeting, a local trash provider came and spoke and mentioned two things, and one was totes or some hard receptacle to keep rodents and everything else out. I didn't think that was a bad idea, and I think councils should give it some thought. A lot of people don't want to buy a tote or get a garbage can or anything else, but it does reduce rats and cats getting into the garbage and the birds and everything else with the plastic bags out front. But more importantly, it was a suggestion and sort of backed by one of the council people, let's regulate what days private business can do business in the city of Batavia. What day is going to garbage truck come on your street? I don't think council really, nothing personal, but I don't think you're really that good at telling private business what days they should be able to come around and do business. Companies spend a lot of time and money figuring their routes based on customers, trucker worker availability. I know when they come around my neighborhood, they also do part of the town as part of a route. And to tell them, well, gee, I don't like you coming on a Monday or Tuesday, come on a Wednesday. If they had to do that, it's going to run up the cost. One day the trucker may, driver may not be busy, and another day there may not be enough. I would ask the council to stay out of the business of telling private enterprise how to do their job. Thank you very much.
Council response to public comments?
I have to agree with Mr. Roach in as much we need to stay out of how these individual businesses do their business. Totes aren't a bad idea. I think it should be a personal choice. I don't think it's a really big pot problem. I don't think we have an apocalypse, a piece of boxes falling all over the place. I think that was exaggerated a bit.
Section one fifty-five dash three, sub B, it defines that all containers shall be plastic trash bag, metal or plastic trash cans with handles or any other type. So it specifically already covers that. Section one fifty-five basically covers everything about the garbage, and a lot of the issues are already addressed, including blowing trash, not picking up from your neighbors, even covers up to a two hundred and fifty dollar fine and fifteen days in jail for numerous violations and total disregard. So I think that's already covered. And on the days for trash, I totally agree. I don't believe we should be regulating how businesses do business, especially when you're telling somebody to cram a five-day schedule down to three days, and they have to do a couple thousand customers in the city. That might be virtually impossible without paying additional overtime, additional crews, additional trucks, which translates into, as well concerned as we were about it, it translates into higher costs for the consumer, and that's why I think sometimes good intentions should be well researched before we go down that road. So I agree. I don't think we should be in the business of regulating businesses, and we have a lot of regulations already, and it covers pretty much everything that everyone was concerned about. So if you would, you know, later on when you get a chance, look up section one fifty-five of the Batavia Municipal Code, and it pretty much gives you everything you need to know about it. So I couldn't find anything where we were lacking. I looked at it extensively, and I think we're okay. And at this point, we should just leave it the way it is. But it's up to the rest of the council, I'm just one person. Anyone else? Okay, communications?
Just one tonight. Ever-present church requested to extend their service into the concourse for their church services on Wednesdays and Sundays from February through December. Wednesdays would be from five to eight thirty, and Sundays would be from eight AM to one thirty PM.
Any questions or concerns on that?
Yeah, do they provide security so people aren't wandering around? Have we had any problems or?
No, we haven't had any problems. They don't supply security because their doors are already open out to the concourse anyway, when they're here on Sundays.
Right, but you haven't had any problem with people walking in other parts of the concourse?
No.
Okay, good.
The way I read it, it just is overflow from their normal church services, so I would think they would be paying attention to that. I mean, if they are overflowing, they're obviously being able to see the service, so I would think they'd know if there was any commotion or anything out there would disturb the service. So I mean, let us know if anything changes, but.
Okay.
I mean, that's the way I read it. They just want an extra room in case it spills out into the mall, and they wanted to have the room to have people safely be able to attend church.
Right.
Thank you. Any other concerns on that? That's the last one. There's another one. The next city council meeting will be held Monday, March tenth, twenty twenty-five, seven PM. City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, city center. We have numerous public hearings today. Number one is the public hearing to adopt local law to override the tax cap limit for the budget fiscal year commencing April first, twenty twenty-five, and a motion to open that, Mr. Beely. Seconded by Mr. Twitchell. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes. Okay, now we have the public hearing. Anyone sign up to speak?
I want to sign up.
Does anyone like to speak? They forgot to sign up, they're more than welcome to speak. Okay, motion to close. You want to, I didn't know if you wanted to speak.
Oh, no, I'm just.
Motion to close, Mr. McGinnis, sorry. I didn't want to interrupt you. If you had a comment, I didn't want to interrupt you. Mr. McGinnis? Seconded by? Mr. Twitchell? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is a public hearing to adopt the twenty-five, twenty-six budget ordinance, number zero zero one dash two zero two five. Mr. Baykowski makes the motion to open it. Seconded by Mr. Beely. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Okay, but anyone like to speak on the budget? Okay, a motion to close, Mr. Baykowski. Seconded by Ms. Schmidt. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
That's closed. Now we have a public hearing to adopt amendment, local law number two, year twenty twenty-five, section one eighty-four dash forty-one, sub section A of the Batavia Municipal Code to Establish New Water Rates, Mr. Richmond. Seconded by Ms. Briggs. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Richmond?
Yes.
Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Anyone like to speak on the water?
I'd like to make a comment, Mr. President. I think it's imperative that Rachel, maybe someone on your staff could do this, but we need to get more publicity out as to the rising cost of treating water in sewage. I've had calls from people complaining, you know, you guys raised my taxes, now you're raising my water. I mean, how much more do you want us to pay? And when I explain to them about the cost of water treatment, it's going through the roof, you know, it's probably doubled in the last four years. It's just, I don't think most people even rea, they didn't think about it. They just think the water comes from someplace that goes through a pipe to their house, and we charge them for it. So sometimes a little public education can be very helpful.
That's all, thank you. Bob makes a really good point. It's so simple on the consumer end. Turn the water on, it's always clean, it's always fresh, it's right there, and I guess we forget the difficulties that go through getting it to that state. And you guys make it look easy because you always have plenty of water, and we had plenty of water to fight that fire recently. So you're doing a great job, but it looks effortless, and I guess people don't realize all the sewer ponds and all that stuff that we were talking before. You flush it, it goes somewhere, and it doesn't back up, and everything's clean, and they don't realize on the other end all the work that goes into making that happen. So thank you for doing that, but at the same time, it's not a bad idea to kind of remind people that it is a long process to get the water that's soiled, to get it clean, and put it back in the environment, in the same way to get it clean and get it to your house. And it looks simple, but it's not. So thank you for doing that, but it's not a bad idea to kind of remind people every once a while. Because cleaning out the ponds, the chemical prices, they're very expensive, they're not going down. That's a cost. That's why it drives all these increases, because infrastructure and all that is just the way it is. Thank you, Bob, for that comment. Anyone else? Motion to close, Ms. Schmidt. Seconded by Mr. Richmond. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Okay, that's closed. Another, the last one is public hearing to adopt amendment to local law number three of the year twenty twenty-five, section one forty-seven dash forty-seven, A of the Batavia Municipal Code to Establish New Sewer Rates. Mr. Twitchell? Seconded by Mr. McGinnis. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing is now open. Anyone like to speak on the sewer rates? Okay, motion to close, Mr. Beely. Seconded by Mr. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
That closes the last public hearing for today. Committee appointments?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Before you have a resolution to appoint Alexis Green and Ryan Duffy to the Historic Preservation Committee. I believe it was reviewed by Councilmember Briggs and Councilmember Schmidt as well.
Does Mr. Duffy being our historian, does that affect anything?
No, I think it's good.
That's what I mean, in a positive way. I didn't know if there was some rule that prevented him from like sitting there as a congressman. Yeah, because he's the perfect guy you want on there, as well as.
Agreed.
This is a committee anyway. I don't believe they have any ability to enforce or enact any ordinances or anything.
Well, you bring up a good point, because the top, it says city committees, and at the bottom, it says Historic Preservation Commission. So I know we're just talking about words here, but does that make it different, being a commission versus a committee?
So the, it's a committee, but they do have the power with certain historical buildings to set parameters on construction and other reuse elements.
Right, historic already buildings are designated.
Correct.
I don't, I don't think they can pass any legislation or new laws or anything. They just have, follow guidelines, correct?
Right.
The only way that those laws would get passed would be through planning board, coming to council and subject council's legislative discretion.
And that's what confused me, because the top is the standard resolution to appoint various city committee members and boards, right? Then down below, it says Historic Preservation Commission. So that just threw me for a little bit. I didn't, you know, the wording seems simple enough, but I also know that words make a difference when you talk about legal things, so just wanted to make sure the definition of commission didn't make it something different, that's all.
We will check that before the resolution comes to the business meeting.
Okay.
And make sure it's.
But anyone else have any other concerns about the, I think they're good people, and they both live in the city, so that's also good, so. So are we in consensus to move that to the business meeting for a vote?
Yep.
Do you think it's moved? Order of assessment review?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Before you have a resolution to reappoint Lois Charice to the Board of Assessment Review. She has been on it for a number of years and done a really great job. There was no other application, so she was able to reapply and be reappointed after a Heidi four-month hiatus?
Three.
Three-month hiatus, thank you.
But it was actually longer, because her term ended September thirtieth, so this way past the three months, so nobody was still interested in it?
Correct.
It's unfortunate. We could, if anybody wants to serve or help your community, please volunteer for these committees, because we have a hard time filling that, and it's important that you, you know, do your civic duty and help us out, because we need the advice that these committees provide, and it's important, so. That'd be another thing we should try to advertise more for, because I really think more people should be involved, so thank you for that. Anyone else have anything to add to that? If you'd like, are we in consensus then to move this to the business meeting for a vote?
Yes.
Do you think it's moved? The annual resolutions, the investment policy is the first one on the list?
Yes, thank you, Council President. We don't have any changes this year to the investment policy, annual review and resolution.
So it's basically an annual thing, we have to just reaffirm every year?
Correct. You should read it and make sure it all looks up to snuff. The last time we changed it was at least four years ago, when we added the ability for the manager to invest in specific banks prior to council approval, as long as he or she let council know immediately that we've added a bank, and then followed up with a resolution. And that was specifically so we could get investments into high-yield opportunities quickly, when the market was kind of having a lot of different opportunities for us. And again, that was at least four years ago. That was the last change in the investment policy.
And that brings up a good question. Heidi, we had a chat about this earlier, I had a meeting a couple months or a couple weeks ago. You said this is working out really good. We've done really well with this and improved our, our income from this?
Oh, significantly, hundreds of thousands of dollars of investment income. Three plus one has been fantastic. They don't make any of the decisions, but they offer suggestions on how to do this, since it's not our full-time job to be investors. They just give us the tools to do it. They reach out to banks on our behalf, looking for the best rates, and they're fantastic to work with.
And what was, what were we earning when we were trying to do it on our own? Significantly less, or?
It wa, well, depends on the market. I mean, when I first started, we were earning like five percent, because it was big, but those were just minimal CDs with our money market accounts, and now with all the realizing we could invest reserves and all of this extra funds that are idle until we need it on a project or something like that, they really just kind of opened our eyes to all of the money that was available for investing, and sometimes cutting it really close, but we invest as much as we possibly can, so that we can make as much as we can.
And that's helping you learn the process as well?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, they're great. We meet quarterly with them as well, on a Zoom meeting, or sometimes he does come in, and his discussions and information is very interesting, so it's fun.
So it's well worth it?
Yeah, yeah, good stuff.
Good deal. Thank you. Any questions? So we're in consensus to move that resolution to the business meeting for a vote? Do you think it's moved? The next one is the absence reserve?
Yep. Annually, at the end of each fiscal year, we ask city council to approve the use of compensated absences for employees that retire or leave service. These have already been paid. We are just doing the end-of-year resolution. There, you're not going to see these large payments in the future, as the majority of our contracts have been changed over the years to allow employees to either cash out their sick time or put it into a deferred compensation. But we still do have employees who benefit from older contracts, so that's why you're seeing such a large amount there.
All right, any questions? So we in consensus to move that to the business meeting for an official vote? Do you think it's moved? Parking and dumpster permits?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Annually, the city moves parking and dumpster fees to reserves, and we're requesting the approval of moving five thousand dollars to the parking lot reserves before the end of the fiscal year.
Any questions?
Yeah, Bob? It was, brought to my attention a couple weeks ago, but we've never done anything yet on this. We've talked about it, but some of the streets that have homes so close together, they don't even have driveways, and there's no parking for people.
And in the future, if we could look at, you know, alternate street parking, buy permit, charge for the permit, whatever, but I know, I think on the south of Bellican Street, there's a couple streets where the homes, they can't have parking behind them, because you can't even get between the houses, and they've been converted to rentals.
And so I just thought I'd mention, that's something to look into in the future as time goes on.
Yeah, I mean, we'd know if there were cars kind of in awkward places, maybe we should see if anybody notices that, and see if there's any troubled spots where there's not enough parking for people, and we could look at it, I guess. I mean, it's worth looking into.
I will say I'm a hundred percent against, and I know everyone doesn't share my view, on-street parking, even in the summertime. I believe it lends itself to higher crime rates, to more property damage. The street sweeper doesn't run at night like it used to, and that was always the, the reason why we didn't have, allow on-street parking in the summer, because we wanted the street sweeper to go through, and it would, it would run at night. It now runs during the daytime, but I personally am against the look of a city without-street parking. I think it starts, you start to have junk cars, you start to have drug cars, you start to have a lot of things in your neighborhoods that you don't see today. With houses without driveways, we certainly can talk to them about their options for parking in city lots where we do allow permits, or opening up other city lots where they may be able to park. So we'd ask that they come in and talk to us about those issues. I know we do have one or two houses that use our city lots for overnight parking, and, you know, just like an apartment, they have to drop off their stuff, go park and walk back, or they share with a neighbor, and they work out some kind of deal, but certainly renting out a house to someone without parking seems like an issue.
And then maybe a good idea too. I mean, I don't know what available city parking we do have at this time, but, you know, if people have to walk a block, it's not like, not like you drop off your stuff and move the vehicle.
If you think about it, if someone has a problem in the summer, what do they do in the winter with their car, right? I mean, they got to put it somewhere, because they can't park on the street, because we have to plow. So if they have that problem, if it's a temporary thing where friends are over, and they maybe don't want to, you know, drive home or whatever, it's too long a drive, that's one thing, but to do it permanently, that's not solving anything for a few nice months of the year. The rest of the year, we have snow like this, where would they park? They'd have to be in a parking lot somewhere, or a neighbor's driveway and work something out.
Or in the street, and the plow can't get by, and it becomes very messy.
And it creates a windrow around it, and that's happened too.
Oh, it's a nightmare. It's definitely a nightmare, and then you have to have a time span where you move it from the other side of the street, and all the rest. Apparently, and I remember quite a few years ago, someone came and spoke on Mississippi. The home had parking for one car, and there's like three apartments in the house now. It's just a hardship. As we've done with the apartments downtown, we've made parking available by permit, which people have to purchase, and, you know, so.
So we keep an eye on it, I guess. If we start to see it being a major problem, we should.
And the landlord can come in and talk to our code enforcement officer about extension of driveways and other items that might be a relief as well. So sometimes the homeowner and/or the, the property owner can play a role in fixing the situation as well.
And for some reason, I think I overspoke it. At the time, it was on Hudson Street, maybe just south of Bellican, in that area, there were some homes that were problems.
It's the old neighborhood, we're all driveway apart from each other. It's kind of a tight fit. That was the way they did it back in those days. I don't think we build, I don't think they build houses that close anymore, and it would not make sense to do that, but that's the uniqueness of our neighborhoods, is their kind of that nineteen twenties era thing. So anyone else on the head? Okay, so we in consensus to move the parking and dumpster permits to the business meeting for a vote? The purchase manual?
Thank you, Council President. We had minor changes to the purchasing manual. The changes that were made include adding pre-employment activities as an exception to quotes and bids. Pre-employment activities deal with health screening and psychological reports on our employees. I mean, not psychological, but personality assessments. Also that we require serial numbers and fixed asset numbers on all surplus properties, so we can continue to keep track of that, and changing the CFDA to assistance listing throughout the document, and as well as updating the list of individuals responsible for purchasing. And I thank Lisa Neary for getting this done every year, and Heidi, the investment policy as well.
So in red is all the changes, and those are just most likely updating the vernacular and doing the.
Correct.
Thank you for all that work. It looked like it was a lot of reading and correcting. Anyone have any questions, Lisa or Briggs?
I did. On page thirty-three of the manual, section eight dash two, it says something about if you have any knowledge. Okay, section eight-two, prohibit employees who have access to non-public county information from using such information for personal gain.
That, that should be changed to city. Thank you for pointing that out.
That should be changed to city. Thank you for pointing that out. If it's okay with you guys, I'll incorporate that for the business meeting. That's me.
It says non-public county, should be non-public city?
Correct.
So it's basically like insider trading kind of thing is what you're saying, right? They have information.
We grabbed this portion of policy from the county, so it's just something we missed.
That's why we're keeping copies and proofreading. Anything else, Bob?
No.
Okay. Anyone else? So are we in consensus to move the purchasing manual corrected to the business meeting for vote? Okay, that gets moved. Local law number one, override the tax cap.
Yes, we've discussed at length throughout our six budget meetings the necessity to override the tax cap. Our general fund budget is 2.6%, or $600,000 higher than last year, which is causing us to have to override the tax cap. Even with the override consideration, property tax owners will see a 50 cent decrease per thousand in their taxes this year, and I'd recommend that council move forward with the override.
Right, and we talked about since 2008, tax rate back then was $10.71 per thousand. So over the last period of time since then, city council has been able to get it down, except for during COVID, where it jumped up slightly. It's been a gradual decrease to where we are today, to $8.50 per thousand. That's the way I read the chart that you provided during the.
Yeah, and I think a lot of that is attributed to increased economic development activity, homeowners having investment in their own properties, and of course, we've seen the inflationary housing market certainly has had an effect on that as well with the success values.
Right. Anyone else?
Okay, so I wanted to take to get a response on that. You have to request permission from the state, right?
No, you have to inform the state.
Oh, that's simple enough.
Which we've already, already sent out the information to the state that it's under consideration. Yep.
And like you said, what's driving it this year is the healthcare and retirement costs. So that's $630,000 for healthcare and $380,000 for retirement costs. And we can't count on sales tax revenue to increase. We're playing it conservative, so we don't want to, you know, budget for more than we expect to get in. So we might be okay, it might work out, but at this point, it's a 50 cent per thousand reduction, and hopefully we can carry on that trend. Right? So we in consensus to move that to the business meeting for a vote?
Yes.
You think it's moved? Budget ordinance?
The budget ordinance, the budget is 3.8 million across all funds. Departments worked hard to cut costs, find savings, and keep the budget under inflation numbers. The city's general fund budget is 22.8 million with a projected property tax rate of $8.46. As mentioned before, a 50 cent decrease in the tax rate per thousand. And so tonight, we're moving forward the budget ordinance to the business meeting.
Any questions? Okay, are we in consensus to move the budget ordinance to the business meeting?
Yes.
You think it's moved? Local law number two, the establishing water rates?
Yes, thank you, council president. As previously discussed, the water fund budget is $6.98 million. The water rate is projected to be $6.52 per thousand gallons. The water rate increased by six cents per thousand gallons, or 1%. The meter and capital improvement fees will remain the same, so there's no increase on those quarterly rates. And the total increase for both water and sewer will be below $50 for the average household of four residents. And I would say, looking at all utilities that residents do have to pay, we still hope to maintain the service for them at a very, very low rate while continuing to invest in all the lateral infrastructure we have throughout the city and the plants, as mentioned before by council member Byakowski and council member Janikowski.
Anyone else? So are we in consensus to move that to the business meeting? You think it's moved? Local law number three, the new sewer rates?
Yes, thank you, council president. The sewer budget for this year is $4.86 million. The sewer rate will be $3.23 per thousand gallons. It's an increase of nine cents, or 3%. We haven't had a sewer rate increase in over 20 years in the city. This increase is a direct result of multiple capital projects that we need to undergo at the plant, including sludge removal, bypass system gates, plant optimization, and other items we have going on at the plant. The sewer meter fee remains the same.
Any questions on that? Rob?
Yeah, did we get it worked out now? I hope there haven't been any more complaints about not having a sewer meter, because I had about four of those, and after I explained how part of the meters charged up.
Correct.
It was okay.
Right. Yes, we have. We have individuals that do call who like to chat with the billing office, I believe. But yes, the meter, because your water goes through your meter, and your sewer bill is based on the water going through the meter, we do call it a sewer meter fee. It was never billed that way, but the way we bill now is more accurate, and that's why it shows up on the bill as a split up charge. But it was always being billed. It just was lumped into one meter fee.
Right. I fully understand that. That's what I explain to people, but it's amazing, one little thing, phone starts ringing.
Well, we encourage the call. We like to explain it, so, yeah. We do.
Can I add? Okay, are we in consensus to move that to the business meeting?
Yes.
You think it's moved? Summer recreation agreement?
Yes, thank you, council president. Before you have a four-year contract for summer parks and recreation services. We're gonna let Eric go into the details, but just a reminder, four years ago, we conducted an RFP for services, and the YMCA was selected based on their experience, cost, and the ability to deliver services for the parks program.
Yep, so we're just looking to continue to do that over the next four years. We're going to contact the YMCA in regards to this. There's a 3% riser on the cost each year, which we think is very reasonable. I provided for you again, your packets, the information from last summer. They had 138 participants in the park program. John Kennedy School, Agena High, 60 participants daily through the three parks. They've also added swimming, which they'll continue in the building this year with the park kids as well. So I've been very much involved with the YMCA through this process, of ensuring that our program is strong and that they're doing what they say they're doing, particularly with pre-registrations and ensuring that the children who are supposed to be there are there throughout the day. We checked them, they checked out, so I'm very happy, and we'll be very interested to continue this for four years.
Same parks as last year, Eric?
We're gonna review it again. It'll be the contracts for three to four. We ran three last year. We're gonna look to do four. We didn't have the volume to do four last year, but we'll be throwing it out there again, make sure to see what happens.
Thank you. So are we in consensus to move that to the business meeting? You think it's moved? Potavia Players Agreement?
Yes, thank you, council president. Before you have a lease agreement with Potavia Players for consideration, it remains at the same rate of $4 per square foot for 11,052 square feet. That totals $3,684 monthly. It also includes a clause for back rent payments to be made to the city, $500 per month or more until the theater is caught up on their back rent. The current back rent is $18,500. They've made significant progress in the last few months in bringing that number down. They continue to build out their, the shows that they're providing, and we've had a great working partnership with them moving through this process. The lease also guarantees that the replacement of the HVAC units, which has already been approved by council, will occur. We have an arrival date of March, end of March, I believe, Tom. You've got some information on that.
Sure. Numbers crossed.
Yes. Roof improvements, in which Penn Pearl of Architects Unlimited is preparing the scope of work to get it out to bid. We wanted to put that in the lease agreement in good faith. If none of us are here tomorrow, it would survive in the lease agreement, and we'd get that project done to the space that the city owns. The reason we are not able to sell it at this time is the anchor grant for $417,000 that went into the project requires that the owner of the property hold it for five years, or there could be a recapture clause. So I do believe that it's in council's best interest to revisit the sale of the parcel as we come up on the term of that agreement in four to five years.
Hi, council. I saw on social media that they had a good turnout during the Viortavia, and they were pleased that a lot of people weren't, you know, didn't understand what it looked like inside, what they provided. So it's optimistic that as more people discover it, they'll get more foot traffic, more people attending their productions, and that it'll help them get back on their feet, and they'll be able to hopefully thrive into the future, I would hope.
I attended the play Mous Trapp in the middle of a snowstorm, and there was over 120 people in the theater.
Excellent.
And I couldn't believe it. And it was great, and I can't tell you what happens. You have to watch it for yourself. It's an Agatha Christie.
I definitely, you know, I think everyone wants them to survive and thrive and be very successful. But it's hard to wish them success, and then the money owed, it was a dilemma they were in. So I hope that they can continue on a successful path, and we can recoup some of that money back, and they could end up paying that bill off, and then going into the future being successful.
Agreed.
Anyone else?
So it has to be five years, is what you're saying?
Well, we already got a couple of years into this, right?
No, we just signed the property forms, declarations that we needed to file with the county about five months ago, so.
So it's five years from now?
Yeah.
I just wondered, because I thought since we have some problems, and since they owe the, maybe not five years, but maybe one or two years, you know, just see how they do, and then say, okay.
Well, and I'll let legal counsel answer that at any point. If we're not happy with the payments or the status of the tenant, we reserve all rights.
Okay.
Without getting into the intricacies of legal advice in an open session, I would say there are provisions for enforcement as necessary.
Okay, that's it. Thank you. No, thanks, Bob.
So what you're saying, the five years, this applies from us disposing of the building, and the lease is kind of separate. So we're kind of on the hook because of the clawback clause for maybe the grant.
The recapture clause.
Recapture, right. So, I mean, it's, I think, I think if everything goes as planned, and it looks like they're on the right path now, I think it's gonna be all right. I think we're gonna be okay. And we want them to succeed as well. I mean, it's important to the community, so. All right, anything else on that?
No, thank you.
So are we in consensus to move that lease agreement to the business meeting for official vote? You think it's moved? Empire State Development, posing its own funding?
Yes, thank you, council president. So many of you who have been on council longer than some of us have been here remember the settlement agreement with the mall merchants, and the fact that the city agreed to not only replace the entire concourse roof, they also agreed to fix the entryways. We have satisfied that, and during the process, back in 2018, when the city did apply for DRI funding to assist with those entryways, they also wanted to extend the tile flooring, or some type of decorative flooring throughout to get rid of the 1980s Burger King floor. They wanted to do some lighting, some painting, and just revitalize the entire space. Well, as we got into the project and COVID hit, the, our money didn't go as far, and our ability to do the other portions of the project was waylaid. And we were only able to complete the entrances and the exterior sidewalks and plantings. So the city was able to apply to Empire State Development as a pro-housing community for funding, and we were awarded $250,000 to continue to complete work inside City Center. So the resolution you have before you is to accept that grant award and to consider matching those funds with $600,000 in facility reserves, plus $100,000 in appropriate convalence from the mall, so that we can continue to do this work and put City Center into a place where future councils don't have to deal with it for another 20 years or so. Already have the roof fixed, we have the silos. If we clean up the floor and all that, especially with the momentum we have going on with new businesses coming in. A golf simulator has come in, game of throws is coming in, there's new, not bounce houses, what do they call it? Escapers, thank you, Gabby. Bounce houses, escapers. Maybe there's bounce houses with them.
Sometimes I bet on bounce houses.
Matt Gray has closed on the property at J.C. Penney's today, which is good news. So we only see the momentum of City Center moving forward as obviously we have our offices there that do healthcare, but now we have some entertainment and food. I heard Sunny's may be closing soon with a new restaurant coming in. The Corner Restaurant, closest to the theater, is also renovating. So we'd like to kind of complete the investment that the city has put forward in the concourse with this project.
Any concerns, questions?
I think it's out of the regular view, we have businesses investing, and we walk out in there, it looks like Burger King, like you said, it's making it attractive, so people go out there, you know.
The biggest cost will be the handicap accessible bathrooms?
Because right now, I don't think they meet ADA, or it'd be difficult, let's say. So the flooring and the lighting and the, that's a small cost. When you start to renovate a bathroom, that's where we're gonna get into the significant cost. But those bathrooms are pretty rough.
Well, and again, on social media, the beer walk came through the mall. I don't recall it doing that in the past, not like they did this time. And there was a lot of positive feedback on, you know, the dry floor and the new entrances, and you could tell it's on its momentum, things are starting to happen from some of the comments. So I agree that maybe continuing on and getting the lighting and the flooring and painting and cleaning, that would be a huge improvement in there, brighten the space up.
Just impressive walking through there like that. With the lighting, all that, it'd be perfect.
It'd be a nice indoor space, especially in the winter. A lot of groups have discovered it and have started to want to rent it, so we probably will come back with a, some rental fee changes that we're looking at as well for the space. But the agreement to take it over, it's ours, and we should make it look the best that we possibly can. That's how I feel about City Center, the Ice Frink and Dwyer and those assets. And they're not something typically all cities own. Some do own these recreational-type facilities. But we do own it, and we should do the best we can with it.
Okay, so are we in consensus to move that to the business meeting for a vote? You think it's moved? Bid awards?
Yes, so before you have annual bid awards for minnows, these are minnows in the ponds. It's like a reverse bid, where the bidders pay us to harvest the minnows. Lime sludge removal, the crane truck, and chemicals. The bids were open this morning, so what we'd like to do is send the results to council via email before the final resolution comes through. But we wanted to make sure we had these ready to go in the meeting schedule so that when we start the year, we can award these bids.
And that's why you see there were X hours in the sample resolutions, because they hadn't opened the bids yet when this was, it could be a agenda meeting on Thursday, so it went right out Thursday evening, I believe.
Tom, did you have anything to add on the bid opening?
Any surprises?
No, at this point, chemicals are on a slowly increase as normal. The crane truck looks to be hopefully about $25,000 under what I had budgeted for, so that's a bonus with all the additions. And everything else is about the same as usual.
Okay, good. But this would get this correct, these will all show up as separate resolutions in the next.
Correct.
So we're moving into the business meeting as a group, but they'll all be separate resolutions defining each item in its own separate way.
Yep.
So we'll move those as a group. Is there anything in there? Lime sludge, minnows, crane truck, chemicals that you want to discuss further? Okay, so we're in consensus to move all that over to the business meeting for a vote? You think it's moved? Surplus of police equipment?
Yes, thank you, council president. City property valued at over $1,000 require that we declare it surplus via resolution. As part of an ongoing equipment upgrade, the police will surplus several firearms, and the proceeds will be put into the police reserve account and/or part of the trade-in to award the contract for the purchase of short-barrel rifles. And I'll let Sean explain these two resolutions for you.
Yeah, so the following resolution, this one is surplusing what we're getting rid of for the purchase in the next resolution that will be awarded if you choose about the short-barrel rifles. Again, we're just updating our, all of our weaponry this past year, and the team is on top of things and in good shape.
I just noticed hyperbole stuff. In the receipt with the company from Lockport, I believe, they list a 37-millimeter gas gun as being traded in. You don't have it on the resolution as being surplused out. They also list two MP5 SIM kits. You don't have that on the resolution as being surplused out. So those need to be added to the resolution. And the resolution contains the Remington long-range rifle there, the bolt-action rifle, and the AMRAID bolt-action rifle, but the quote for the trade-in does not have those in. Are they gonna be traded in separately?
Yes, those are gonna be traded in separately at a later time. We just want to make sure we get everything surplused in.
Because it was important to me, because those are two high-value items that we're missing from there, and it could have been a big hunk off the price of the rifles we buy. So I just wanted to, so definitely those SIM kits, by SIM kits, I mean, it's a kit that goes in the real rifle and converts it to fire a. it's a kit that goes in the real rifle and converts it to fire a paint marking cartridge so they can use training, not be shooting live ammo inside buildings and stuff. They can train with it in a safer manner. But they wear out over time and you don't have those MP5s anymore. So it's time to.
Yeah, let me double check that and make sure that we get that included in the.
Yeah, those are the only two things, I mean, the gas gun and the MP5s were just not in the resolution to be disposed of. And I don't think they're serial numbered, but I bet the gas gun is definitely serial numbered. The SIM kits are probably not. I just wanted to make it official because otherwise we're going to have equipment that we didn't dispose of that we don't have anymore because it's not, there's no paper trail showing it go out the door.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, it's not over $1,000 and doesn't have to come to council for disposal.
So that might be, that's a perfect example why it's not.
So I'll double check that.
Yeah, thank you.
Are we replacing the gas gun with something else?
No, this is not a replacement of the gas gun. This is the replacement of all of our patrol rifles as well as our training Glock handguns. Because as you recall, we upgraded to the 9mm and the 40 caliber. So the training guns that we have no longer fit in our leather gear. So we have to change those out. Plus, they didn't have any red dots. As far as the 37 millimeter, I do have to check on that to see.
That might be the, is that the original one from like 1960s?
That'd be the federal lab.
It is, but so it's an old wooden stock. That's why it's only valued at $200.
Yeah, that's probably right.
I mean, it still works. I mean, it still works. It's just.
If Chris was sick tonight, otherwise he'd be here to answer these particular firearms questions because I know nothing about them. I don't have a holder.
Even though it's valued under $1,000, it's a serial numbered controlled item. You can't own that as a civilian. So it's probably something you should track.
Got to go to that level, right?
Yeah, it's got to be something to track, so.
Yeah, I'll check. Let me check.
Sorry for the confusion. I just, I'm kind of a stickler to people.
And chief, those new rifles will be caliber 223, same as the old?
That actually takes care of the next item on the agenda.
Uh, oh, sorry.
Excuse me. New enforcement, who's the actual manufacturer?
Uh, it's the Skirpin Arms.
They're actually manufacturing or are they just selling?
They are manufacturing.
Okay, what kind of track record do they have?
A very good one. This was recommended highly by our new firearms instructors. So I take everything they say, but yeah, most of them.
Do you mind if I was to jam?
Yeah.
It's been around for a while.
Pardon?
It's been around for a while.
They're kind of a niche market. They're high value, you know, it's for the, if you're really into the sport of competition, those are those higher level necessary items. You want good stuff. That would be one of those high value items. Also, if you notice the Psycho Velo's 556K, they're not a rifle. They're actually a silencer company, silencers called, they're suppressors for the rifle, just so you know.
I saw, I saw.
Because it looked like it was 556. You thought, oh, that might be. It's actually a muffler for the firearm. So it's, it tones the noise down a little bit. Not silent, but it definitely makes it a lot quieter so you don't blow your ear in a building, especially for training. Anything else you'd like to add to that, chief?
That's it, I appreciate it.
Anybody else have any questions on that? Okay, so are we in consensus to move that to the business meeting for a vote? That gets moved. Mr. Beely, if you will take us into the next session, please.
Thank you, council president. Where it is, articles of section 15, one of the public officers' law permits the city of Saudi, a municipality entered to executive session to discuss the medical financial credit on public industry of the person or corporation on matters leading to the agreement, the motion, the motion. This plan suspension is official on a rule of people of person or corporation now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Batavia without approval of this motion. The city council is hereby entered into executive session.
Second round. Ms. Briggs, for her open.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yeah.
Jankowski?
Yes.